Where due ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, we've already had, we're bringing a meeting to order. In this case, I'm going to ask for a roll call for the city clerk.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tim James Whitmore.
Present.
Honorable Alex.
Present.
Honorable Linda J. Davis.
Present.
Honorable Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
Honorable Samantha Hudson.
Present.
Honorable Ulysses J. Smallwood.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Okay. At this time, we'll call Pastor, excuse me, Pastor Moses, would you please come up, sir? We're going to stand by invitation.
Mr. Mayor, I feel as though since we had inclement weather yesterday, Fairburn United Methodist Church did not have church service, so maybe I should deliver a sermon right now.
No.
He's shaking his head, so I guess I'll go ahead and do what I was asked to do. Mayor Avery, city council members, administrators, Chief Robertson, Chief Basillo, and others, let us pray. Almighty God, we come to you this evening acknowledging your sovereignty and presence. In your word, Lord, you asked us to respect those who govern over us. And tonight, they offer their first fruits, their time, and their presence. We request that you see us and abide with us for a while in our administration, deliberation, consultation, and legislation. Bless and walk with all of us, especially our first responders. Provide for them and protect them. We request that you send your Holy Spirit to us as we work for the good of your people, discerning what is true, what is right, and what is good. Give our administrators listening ears to those whom they serve, a focus on keeping the main thing as the main thing, and to walk justly before you. None of us are perfect. When we are less than, please, Lord, inspire us to work harder, and with one another for greater effectiveness and success. Because in all things, you are still God, and God all by yourself. You are our protector. You are our provider. Thank you, Lord, for the privilege of their service. Thank you for your grace and your goodness. Now bless us with these deliberations, oh Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, in this case, actually, we have the adoption of our city council agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. This time, we have a presentation and proclamation. I'd like to...
First proclamation honoring Chambers Drum Company LLC for forty years of service.
In this case, members of council, can you join me in our front?
Mr. Mayor, there's a show that...
Hello. This is Patricia Chambers, Vice President of Chambers Drum and Drums Fought and Sold. I'm here to tell you about our company and to give you more insight and understanding into our operations. Chambers Drum and Drums Fought and Sold was founded in 1985 in Fairburn, Georgia. Our experienced team operates two drum reconditioning plants, as well as a drum recycling center to meet all your needs. We recondition steel closed head, steel open head, and intermediate bulk containers. Chambers Drum Company also provides end-of-life recycling for steel, plastic, and intermediate bulk containers, with the end product going to the post-secondary market. Our operation gives us the unique opportunity to either recondition a container or to provide cradle-to-grave container management solutions. All of this is housed within our two state-of-the-art facilities. This is Patricia again. Our mission at Chambers Drum Company and Drums Fought and Sold is to produce a quality container meeting customer specifications, provide exceptional service for your recondition and used drum needs, to utilize our advanced thermal treatment equipment to be one of the most environmentally friendly drum production facilities, and to promote worker safety and health. With our experience in the drum industry dating back four generations, we have the knowledge and expertise that is unsurpassed in the business. From all of us at Chambers Drum Company and Drums Fought and Sold, we encourage you to return, reuse, and recycle your drums and intermediate bulk containers. Thanks for watching.
Members of council, can you join me in our front if you will?
Sure.
I'd like to invite Mr. Chambers to come to the front, please.
Sir, thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
On behalf of the city of Fairburn, a proclamation in recognition of forty years of service, Chambers Drum Company, whereas the city of Fairburn boasts a rich history of industrial businesses bolstered by strategic transportation assets and a skilled workforce that fosters remarkable growth and development within its downtown historic commercial district, and whereas the mayor and the city council envision a thriving local economy that actively recruits and retains diverse industries, and whereas Chambers Drum stands as an industry leader celebrated nationally for its exceptional work in drum reclamation and has been a vital contributor to the Fairburn community since 1985. Whereas owner-operators Patricia and William Chambers Jr. has successfully nurtured this family-owned business that has increasingly grown for four generations driven by a mission to create high-quality containers tailored to custom specification, and whereas Chambers Drum is unwavering in its commitment to the city of Fairburn community, offering exceptional service for reconditioned and used drums, innovating product delivery through advanced thermal treatment, and upholding the highest standards in environmentally friendly drum production facilities. Now therefore, I, Mario B. Avery, the mayor of the city of Fairburn, along with Mayor Pro Tim James Whitmore, council members Linda J. Davis, Alex Heat, Samantha Hudson, Hattie Portis Jones, and Ulysses Smallwood, do hereby celebrate and proclaim January the thirteenth, 2025, as Chamber Drums Company Day.
Yeah, I would, first of all, like to thank everyone that's here. Patricia would like to have been here tonight. She's taking care of her ninety-two-year-old mama, which I said, hey, I'll step in for you, because I've actually retired from Chambers Drum Company. But over the last forty years, we've seen a lot of changes in Fairburn. Some good ones, some bad ones, but one thing I can say now, I think we're on the right track, and we're doing good. Look at all these other cities in the metro area, hey, I think we're above and ahead of everybody. Hey, everybody that runs these departments are doing a great job. We appreciate it, and anything we can do for the city of Fairburn, just let us know. Thank everyone of y'all.
Okay. In this case, proclamation's been done. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go to our public comment port of our meeting. Public comment, thirty minutes shall be available for public comment. Each speaker shall be limited to two or three, to two or three minutes. Actually, it's going to be three. However, a speaker may transfer his or her three minutes to another speaker, but no speaker shall speak, be permitted to speak for more than six minutes. Further in the event, if more than ten speakers desire to speak, each speaker will be limited to two minutes. Issues raised at this time are generally referred to the city administrator for review. Responses were provided at a later date. Mr. James, how many speakers do we have today?
We have two.
Two? Would you call our first speaker?
We have Ernie Brooks.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to say that I really like the garden park, what is it called, the rain garden over there on Go Lightly at Lightning, coming into the city on the left. Man, that looks really inviting. Good job. So, thank you for accomplishing that mission of, you know, improving the environment. They say it's very healthy to get in touch with nature, go for a walk. So, anyway, I'd like to bring up some concerns about the defined benefit plan improvement. First of all, I discovered that there's actually five slots on the pension plan that are vacant. There's no one on the committee or the commission that's required. Also, if I could read this to you, the Constitution of the State of Georgia provides that the city may not incur long-term obligations payable out of the general property taxes without the approval of a majority of the qualified voters of the city, voting at an election call to approve the obligations. Also, I was lucky enough to be here when this was handed out. Everybody got one. And what I was concerned about is September the twentieth, I'm sorry, September the thirtieth, 2023, the contribution rate was 4.82% of the annual payroll budget. A year later, I'm sorry, a little while later, not long, January of '24, the contribution rate was 10.05% of the annual payroll. And, you know, I don't mean to disrespect anyone, and more than likely, it's my misunderstanding, but looking at some of these numbers, not being a number person, it looks like, it looks like on page sixty, there was a transfer of $50,000 from the hotel motel tax fund to the general fund. And then on page fifty-seven, it looks like that $50,000 goes into the pension contribution plan. Now, that's just me looking at it. I don't know if that's factual. But I'm sort of disappointed that all the votes don't get the rise with pension plan improvements. It's only a certain amount of people that have been cut out of the group.
Fifteen seconds. Keep going, keep going. Oh, no, you have fifteen seconds left, sir. I was just saying fifteen seconds, you have fifteen seconds left.
I got fifteen seconds left?
Yeah, fifteen seconds. Go ahead. I was just...
Hold up. I'm good.
Okay.
Homer Smith?
I know I may look like Ernie Brooks, but I identify as Homer Smith. As Ernie Brooks was saying.
Is that a real person?
Hold on for a second, Ms., hold on, sir. Did you sign up for...
What?
As a...
Y'all are too serious. Thank you. I love it.
All righty, thank you. It's different. Over my years, I've never seen that.
Everything is...
There was a council, you have before your approval of the city council minutes for December the ninth, 2024, and entertain a motion to approve a minutes.
So moved.
Would you approve that?
When the order...
I've got to bring it to the floor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Would you approve with the noted amendment, please? Would you approve him with the noted amendment?
Okay, yes. In this case, remember, in this case, you have a motion to approve the minute with the noted amendment. I have a motion.
What's the noted amendment?
Where the mayor said that he was recessing the minutes for safety reasons.
Okay. And there was a second about Ms., in this case, Ms. Davis second?
No, 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 no. I'm abstaining because I wasn't here.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Smallwood made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, break the floor. Ms. Hudson?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not putting hearsay in the minutes. I do have some concerns about the second... have some concerns about the section in the minutes and the wording of what I said prospectively. So I just want the clerk to go back. I'm not for sure if it was like a system like AI or note reader that's entering. It could have missed some things. So if we can just go back like the last part, because it was a lot of conversation back and forth.
Yes, ma'am.
Looking at the grammatical errors and making sure that it reads appropriately. So that, unless you want me to specifically point things out, I can follow up in the email with her on that. So that's, those are my concerns. And the fact that the minutes now will have to, I believe, reflect how you do that. I don't know, Ms. James, what we did tonight. I don't know if that goes on. No, because it will have to go back in these minutes, the corrections that we made, right?
It will only state that the mayor said that he was adjourned in a meeting for safety reasons, and it should have been in my notes, but it wasn't on the recording because he had turned the recording off.
So we can't enter in something that wasn't legally captured?
Well, I captured it in my notes, but she listened to the tape and did it, tried to do it verbatim from the tape. But Mr. Small, I was saying noted by what council member Smallwood heard also, and I heard that. But if you all don't want it in the minutes?
Well, if those council members or whoever heard it, you can say that they heard that, but it's not officially in the record. So I just want to make sure that whatever we put in is officially in the record. I'm sure you want to make sure that as well, that those things are official. We don't have it on recording and we don't have it in writing. But I would accept councilman Smallwood saying, I heard it, okay?
Okay.
So it couldn't be a definitive statement. It would just have to be more subjectively stated that this council member heard it.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, and for the record, when you took a recess and Ms. Jones and I was having a discussion, I was just having a conversation about the issue, okay? Nothing was out of line, nothing was physical. It was a verbal communication back and forth between the two of us. And for you to interpret it as a safety issue, I need to say for the record, I understand what you're doing because I know your playbook, all right? And I see what you're trying to do, but that will not succeed with me. You will never silence me. You will never be able to paint a picture that is untrue. You have lied in the past and you're lying now.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. At this point, go ahead. We're going to our public hearing. Want to go ahead, break up our first item, discuss it for a public hearing?
First item is impact fee update. It is a request for mayor and council to continue to evaluate the feasibility of impact fees as a potential revenue source in funding infrastructures, system improvements for new developments within the City of Fairburne.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The item before you is the impact fee program. We previously worked to get a consultant team on board so that we could look at the feasibility and provide all the necessary documents. Again, an impact fee is an additional source of revenue, a one-time charge that is placed on developers. So potentially anyone building apartments, new homes, industrial development, it's a one-time fee, and that fee goes to assist with capital improvement projects. As you guys might remember, we just recently approved a parks master plan with a lot of public input about amenities and things that they want to see happen. This could be a potential source of funding to allow some of those ideas to move forward. The process to develop an impact fee does require public input and public participation. It is a one-time fee. It can't be charged more than the fair share. So there's a great deal of additional requirements in terms of research and analysis that the development team, our consultant team, has to do to make sure that we provide the necessary document to show why you need that fee. So our consultant is here with us and she can provide a great more detail about this. They've done them for a number of cities and counties all across Georgia, and they've been able to fund some much-needed public amenities. The scope of what we're looking at right now is parks, open space, recreation, public safety, including fire and police. That's just to sort of get us started, and we can, of course, expand in the future if that's the will of council. The scope of the impact fee study could include things like, in terms of what they're looking at now, parks, acreage, residential components, building areas, heavy vehicles. Our Parks and Rec Department, our police, the fire department, they were extremely helpful in providing a lot of data. And that data was then sent to the consultant team to begin the analysis piece. And I can't just thank them enough because I know it wasn't an easy task with everything that they have going on, but the fact that they took the time to provide this information, I'm incredibly grateful for that. So we currently do have a capital improvement element that will need to be updated. When the capital improvement element was previously approved with our comprehensive plan, it did not include some of those things that are in the parks master plan or some of the items that have recently come up. So we want to make sure that we update that CIE document to reflect some of the new data that we have. We've also provided the consultant team with information on all of the pending developments. And any development that does not currently have a building permit would be subject to this fee. So we're working as fast as we possibly can to get this item completed. In terms of the requirements, we did have to host a public hearing, which is why I'm here before you. We also had to come up with a list of committee members. It was a specific requirement that fifty percent of those committee members had to reflect the development community. So the people that are potentially going to be paying that fee have to be a part of looking at all of this data, looking at the recommendations, and giving us their honest feedback. They don't have to agree with it, but they do have to be a part of it. So we reached out to STRAC, which is one of the larger construction companies in the area. We reached out to a real estate agent, Planning and Zoning Commission members. We also reached out to members of the DDA. So proposal for committee members includes Mr. Homer Knight, Ms. Lena Parker. I wanted to make sure that both sides of town had some sort of input in that process. A STRAC representative is a part of that. We had a real estate agent that has been really interested in our downtown and, you know, came to a meeting with us and was asking about potential properties that she could invest in. And so after that meeting, I asked, would you be interested? Because a real estate agent is one of those persons that could, you know, potentially provide a great deal of feedback and meet that fifty percent requirement. Darrell Baker was probably about a year or so ago. He is the developer for the hotel on seventy-four. He's also worked in a lot of communities that have the impact fee, so he's familiar with it. And then also Mr. Richard Ferry, who is doing the Ferndale, he was also a former city manager. And he's also familiar with impact fees and has had to pay them for a number of other communities. So he's familiar with the process. Those are the potential committee members. Of course, if there are other folks that you think might be interested, all the meetings will be publicized online. So if there are members of the public that are passionate about this and would like to attend, they will all be welcomed. But we do have our consultant here, and I don't want to steal all of her thunder, so I'm going to step to the side for a second and let Ms. Page come up and give you a little bit more information about impact fee study.
Okay.
Good evening. And Denise, thank you. She did an amazing job as usual, and I think you've touched on ninety percent of the points. As she mentioned, this is a significant check-the-box exercise that's required to ensure that this process complies with state law. And so towards the beginning of the process, we do need to have an initial public hearing. And it's just one of several that will be held during the course of the process. So we want to point that out, that this and others are opportunities for public input. The, oh, okay, sorry. This is just, the point of ultimately what we're getting at, as this slide shows, is our documents are going to identify the capital project needs that are anticipated to accommodate the demand, meet the demand for additional ballfields, additional playgrounds, additional fire trucks, additional police or fire space that's needed over the coming decades to meet the demands of new growth. And so this is really, as Denise said, the focus of the impact fee study that's specific to Fairburne is focused on parks, police, and fire. What you don't see here on the project list as impact fee eligible projects, impact fees cannot fund maintenance or replacement projects, and they can't fund staffing. So unfortunately, as the area grows and you need to expand your public services, there are staffing needs associated with that. But the crux of impact fees, development impact fees, is we're looking at projects that expand capacity or the city's ability to expand its services, and that's by virtue of additional fire trucks, additional recreation facilities, youth center space, et cetera. Coming back to the process, as Denise mentioned, there are two formal components, the CIE document, which is going to be your master project list, and your impact fee ordinance that comes at the very end that ultimately will include the fee schedule. What are the fees that the council, if they want to adopt a program, what are the fees that you are comfortable adopting to help pay for future parks, police, and fire projects? So this is a more detailed version of that process. Also, there's something called a methodology report that we are in the middle of. That is a major technical appendix that gives us all the information we need to craft the CIE and the ordinance. As Denise mentioned, there are, we have had great input from all the departments. Everybody's been incredibly responsive. The methodology report is the heavy lift of this process, and it's front-loaded with a lot of calculations. We're looking at household population, employment projections, cross-referencing with what you're seeing on the ground with recent studies and plans. And so once we get that done, we can then move quickly into the remaining components. And subsequent to this meeting, then, we look at the opportunity to, in the near term, have the first meeting with the advisory committee to be appointed, as mentioned. That also is a state requirement to ensure that there's involvement by certain and their input in formal. So the yellow highlights, I know it's a little pinging, highlighting those opportunities for public input, public hearings, advisory committee meetings, as mentioned, will be open to the public. And we are sort of straddling between the first two main sections. We're well into initiation and we are well into crafting the methodology report. As mentioned, that's the basis for the remaining two components, the CIE and the ordinance. We do have to, of course, officially open the hearing as far as inviting any public comment. At this point of the process, typically, it's not until later in the process that we receive input when people actually have something to react to in terms of draft documents. But the state does mandate an initial public hearing and happy, of course, at the appropriate time to answer any questions.
At this time, what I'm going to do, ladies and gentlemen, I need to entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. At this time, ladies and gentlemen of the public, I'd like to ask, is there anyone here that wish to speak in support of this item?
I support this item. And the reason why is because, to me, it's like another tax that eventually it's passed on to people who buy houses or other structures. But I saw parks and trucks, and on page fifty-two of this document, I don't understand this because the principal that we borrowed for vehicles, fire trucks and et cetera, was three hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. The interest is three million. Three million, two thousand, three hundred and five. That just doesn't make sense to me. That how can you have under four hundred thousand dollars borrowed for vehicles, but you're paying over three million dollars in interest? And it says that the city is working with a third party and that the interest was for different vehicles from one point eight-zero percent to nine point two percent. And so to me, to get some relief and pass on the cost with this impact fee, I'm just concerned about how would you determine what their fair share would be? How, I guess that'd come out with the board group. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wish to speak in support of the item? Is there anyone here that wish to speak in opposition to this item? Seeing none. You have an opportunity to rebuttal if you choose, if I'm correct. If you're correctly correct. Did you have a rebuttal at all?
Me?
Oh, not you, sir.
The gentleman made a good point. As far as the fees themselves, that is the burning question, right? What will be charged? What is the fee schedule? That will be determined, as he mentioned, through calculations that will be generated during the course of this process. The methodology report, as I mentioned, the big document that's the basis for everything, will include what's called a maximum fee schedule, and it will determine what new growth's fair share is in terms of the ceiling of the most that could be charged with each, it's based on building permits. The issuance of building permits is the trigger for assessing an impact fee of all new development. And so the calculations based on our projections and capital project needs will identify a fee, an individual fee for parks, an individual fee for police, and individual fee for fire. That will be the maximum ceiling. And then council, at a later date, will have work sessions to talk about, well, here's the most that you could charge based on the demand from future development, but what do you really want to charge? What are you comfortable charging? We'll look at what other communities are charging for comparison. And that, of course, you'll have the feedback from the advisory committee. And so we will provide that ceiling as a basis for discussion much later on in the process to help you arrive at adopting an ultimate fee schedule.
At this point, can I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Members of council, you had before your recommendation to request mayor and council to continue evaluating feasibility of impact fees as a potential revenue source in funding infrastructure.
Yeah, I think it was just for the public hearing. Was it just, it was just for the public hearing.
Oh, it was just here. Oh, okay. So that's all. Here's my question, members of, procedure members, in this case, if members of council had a question.
We can answer any questions, too.
Okay, go ahead. Members of council, does anyone have a question regarding this, even though it doesn't require vote today?
Yes. Well, what I really would like is the information that Mr. Brooks brought up, you know, I don't know how relevant it is regarding the impact fee, but if it is, could you just research the points that he made and provide us a clarification of the discrepancy that he's identifying? And could you also address the issue that he raised during the work session as well?
The defined benefit.
Yes, because there's some mix, mixing of apples and oranges in terms of information, and we want to make sure that that is clarified for the record.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Hudson, I think was-
Yes.
Just go ahead, ma'am.
You mentioned engaging in meetings, and I just wanted to state that we have a low meeting turnout. So when we talk about community engagement, I would like to know what other strategies are you going to utilize to engage the citizens in this conversation? Or like input, surveys, poll and texts. How are we going to do that?
We certainly, if, it's the will of council, put out a survey to discuss the impact fee to provide a, just a brief update of what it means and put some information on the website so that if anybody is interested, they can go on the website and put in their information and just be alerted to what's coming. We can also reach out to Parks and Rec to see if there's any senior groups, and planning and zoning staff happy to go and just give a- and zoning staff happy to go and just give a brief overview of that, so that we can make sure we're tapping into folks who may not have any, um, computers or cell phones or things of that nature. And we can also work with our communication team to make sure that it goes out to the HOAs, the faith-based community, so that everybody is aware of, um, what we're doing. It's sort of a startup, and I can give you some additional analysis.
So, the in-person meetings, are they gonna be recorded? Are they gonna be here at City Hall?
Yes.
Okay, so, the public will have access to those meetings? Okay, thank you.
From it all.
Any other member of council had a question? Go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Um, I would just like to commend, um, Ms. Page, you and, and also Denise. I, um, I brought this up maybe a year ago, because one of our citizens asked, asked if we collected impact fees, which I didn't know anything about that. And so, I think I have a conversation with, uh, Mr. Phillips in reference to it, and I said, wow, we need to look into that. If that's a possibility, it'll be additional revenue. But I had no idea it was so involved with the state law. I mean, that's a lot of stuff that we need to do to even establish, uh, the impact fee and the criteria, so, I, I mean, I think that's great. But I also wanted to know, in reference to the benefits that you listed, is there a limited amount of benefits? Who would benefit from this impact fee? And what are those, uh, requirements of the state in reference to types of benefits? And I know you've got percentages that you have to calculate. It's just, yeah.
Forgive me, when you say benefits, are, are you?
I mean, the impact fee, there is a, it, what I thought I heard that there are restrictions.
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to know, how do you come up with those restrictions? Is, how is that laid out or explained in the process?
Well, uh, again, it, it does, it comes back to, as you pointed out, to the state law. There are set of guidelines that the Department of Community Affairs has come up with, as well as just the, the, the language of the state law that tells us what those limitations are. And they will be further spelled out in a robust ordinance that will delineate how to actually administer an impact fee program and do it within the parameters of the law. But generally, when we talk about restrictions, um, one, it's limits in terms of, as I noted, what the impact fees can be spent on. And so, um, while, as one example, can't help with staffing, well, the point is that if staffing is a need, well, then, what is now coming in from new development, or could with impact fees, and that frees up those funds that are currently coming in from other rec, tax sources in your general fund. But that is the, the biggest limitation in terms of the projects that fees can be spent on. And so, those, it's shown in the slideshow, are really the four big categories. Additional square footage, whether that's building expansion or an additional building, additional heavy vehicles, it can't be, this is another limitation, uh, the police fleet typically doesn't have a service life of at least ten years due to wear and tear, and so, that is another threshold that has to be met. So, um, that heavier specialized vehicle, SWAT van, something like that, mobile command unit would be eligible, uh, but not the patrol fleet. Um, so your buildings, your heavy vehicles, and then the parks and recreation, um, that can be also a little bit more expansive. The, the idea is that we continue what you currently have, we add to what you currently have in your system. But if there's a component in your parks and recreation program that you don't have, we can make that eligible for impact fee funding. I don't, you know, pickleball courts, uh, skate parks, splash pads, um, something that's missing, we can account for in the impact fee program, so that funds can be collected and spent on that. Other, the, the, the second major restraint is the type of, uh, categories. As mentioned, the city is currently focused on just three. The state allows additional categories, um, libraries, you know, anything EMS, E-nine-one-one. Counties typically take advantage of those other categories, animal control, that's the purview of a county government versus municipality. Um, but broadband isn't eligible, schools are not eligible, solid waste is not eligible. So those are some three big, those categories are not part of the Development Impact Fee Act, and so, impact fees cannot be collected or spent on those categories. Um, sorry, I, I, I may not have answered your question.
No, no, I mean.
Kind of big-ticket items when I think of constraints.
Right, right. No, you have, I was just wondering, um, a- all the restrictions of the state law, it seems to be a lot of regulations in reference to the impact fees and stuff.
Yes, and once you get into actually administering a program, there are a whole series of rules, but once they're established, it's not, um, typically, there are, isn't a huge, um, additional demand on staff, it is relegated to whoever, um, is involved with your impact, um, with your building permits. Um, and we don't find that it results in having to pay for additional staff, but there is an administrative fee that's allowed to be collected to help pay if that is needed. Typically, it's three percent, and that can be collected to help administer the program on top of what you're collecting for parks, police, and fire.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one, one question. Um, are you the team that, uh, worked with Savannah to develop their impact fees?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you looked familiar. Um, yes, so I, I did have an opportunity to listen in on, um, the various sessions that they had when they established, uh, the impact fees. So, I too am happy to see that we are now bringing this forward, um, and look forward to the, um, the analysis that will be done.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
No other member of council? You can go to the next item.
The next item is appointment of the mayor pro temp for twenty-twenty-five. Mayor Avery would like to appoint Councilmember Alex Heath as mayor pro temp for twenty-twenty-five.
Is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Smallwood, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next item?
Next item is appointment of the city clerk. Mayor Avery would like to appoint Brenda James as the city clerk for the year twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, uh, motion been made in probably second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Next item is the city of Fairburn twenty-twenty-five meeting schedule calendar. Request for mayor and council approval of the twenty-twenty-five meeting calendar for regular work session and city council meetings.
Members of council, you've heard the projected schedule, is there a motion?
So moved.
There's second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
The next item is the selection of the legal organ for the city of Fairburn for twenty-twenty-five. Request mayor and council approval to select the South Fulton neighbor as the legal organ for the city of Fairburn for twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in probably second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Appointment of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mayor Avery would like to appoint Kenneth Williams to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The appointment will begin January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and will expire January twenty-twenty-eight.
Members of council, this gentleman is actually currently a HOA president, uh, excuse me, on, on Highway thirty-eight, and so, as a result of the, his appointment, what's happened, we lost two members of the Planning and Zoning Board, um, last month, excuse me, uh, and Mr. Mr., uh, where did she go? Okay, I'm sorry. And I was just, I was just gonna mention that, that, I was trying to confirm the two people that were lost in the Planning and Zoning Board, and so, uh, we're down to a minimum to the point where if one of the four members don't come, we're out, we don't have a quorum, so, uh, this gentleman, subdivision, you want to mention the two people that left?
Yes, um, our chairperson, uh, resigned, uh, because she's moving, and we had another member of the, uh, commission that also resigned, so, around the same time, so we are cutting it close and hope everybody stays healthy. Uh, Stuart.
One is Devers. She wants the names.
The names of the two that, that, that left the board.
Oh, um, uh, Commissioner, uh, Devers and Commissioner Stewart.
Right, personal reasons, so. And so, uh, with that being, because we're down to literally a minimum to have a quorum, that's our concern with all the things that's coming down the pike. Uh, members of council, you have before you a, um, an appointment, a request for an appointment of Kenneth Williams of the Planning and Zoning Commission, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
The next item is the supplemental ordinance approving final pricing of twenty-twenty-four combined public utility bonds.
Good evening. On November fourth, mayor and council authorized issuance of the city of Fairburn to go out for bid for combined public utility revenue bonds. That has been priced as of today, so Mr. Bill will come in, will come over and give us the details of what, um, what we were able to gather. Uh, we know that the, the stock market was volatile last month, so we did not proceed, um, in December, but we were able to proceed today. It's a little higher than what we anticipated, but we were able to complete the process. So Mr. Bill will, Johnson will now give you the information.
Good evening, thank you all.
Good evening.
Let me report in on the bond sale. It went very, very well. Uh, we'd, uh, attempted to sell bonds on the nineteenth of December. Uh, the Federal Reserve, uh, had an announcement the day before that really caused a great deal of volatility in the bond market, and we made the decision at that point not to go into the market. Uh, interest rates moved, uh, forty basis points, a hundred basis points is one percent, so, that's a huge move in one day. So, uh, we decided to move it till, to today, which is the first meeting of the new year, and I appreciate you doing that. Uh, we went out about eleven o'clock, went, had an order period until twelve-thirty, uh, went extremely well. We sold sixteen million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand in bonds. All the bonds have been sold. We had a perfect match of buyers and, and your bonds, so the, the bonds have been fully sold. Sometimes you have an oversubscription, sometimes an undersubscription, this time, it was fully subscribed. Before you, I have put, uh, the offering document. A lot of detail went into this, a lot of hard work. Uh, on the description of your, excuse me, your combined public utility system, uh, the, the issue, as I said, was very well received. The, the market very much liked the credit. I had no questions from investors.
Wow.
As to the credit of the city.
Awesome.
Usually I always have a question, they didn't have any questions. Pretty good. A lot of hard work went into this to explain it in the document, so that helped. Also, before you, I have a, a, really a, a pricing summary, let's walk through that, and I'll, I want to show you several things. Page two, uh, we sold sixteen million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand bonds. The bonds were sold at a premium of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and change. The cost of issuance is right at five hundred and seventy-seven thousand. We had gross bond insurance, we, we insured these, this issue, but it's because it's cost-effective. Your rating is A minus, we buy bond insurance at a, at a very fair price, which boosts the rating to double A, so it, it more than saves the cost of the premium, if you will, to, to boost your rating and lower the, the interest rate. Also, uh, revenue bonds often, and this one in particular, requires a debt service reserve, rather than fund that with cash, we fund it with a, a surety bond, same circumstance there. The construction fund that we funded is, is sixteen million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. That is for wastewater capacity that you're purchasing from Fulton County, uh, and the water project that you are connecting to with, with Fayette County. And those two projects, uh, and there's another, uh, project within the city, uh, that's ongoing, but, but those projects will be completed over, really over the next year or so, but this is the upfront funding for that. Page three is, really, the, the principal amounts range from three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, in two thousand twenty-five, to, uh, one million, four hundred and thirty thousand in two thousand forty-four. The coupons, uh, and this is a pricing mechanism, range from five percent to four and an eighth, but the yield is, is really the thing that you're looking at. Those yields ranged from three point one oh percent up to four, uh, in the final maturity, uh, four point three seven percent. And let's flip over to page four, and let me, let me summarize that. Is there a lot of numbers? What does, what does that mean? The, at the bottom of the page, the net interest cost on that entire issue was four point three oh percent. The true interest cost is four point two two eight percent. That is a little higher than what we saw at the end of last year. We are seeing interest rates rise, and we're gonna see them go up some more. Yeah. Hey, this isn't, this isn't stopping. So we're hitting it now, you can always say, well, should we wait? No, because rates are gonna continue up. And so, we caught it at a good time, we, and I'll show you the pricing stacked up to others. Just, you did very, very well, you stacked up very well with others. So, I, I anticipate rates to increase. Most of this year, so, uh, we, I think we hit it at a very good time. Let's go to page five. This is a little technical, but hang with me on this. When you price bonds, you price off of a triple-A index. In the middle of the page, called triple-A MMD, municipal market data, that's the triple-A rates, um, for the tenth, which was last week. That's the, and we, we priced off that, but you, you price your bond issue off a spread of that. And that's the triple-A rates, you're a double-A credit, so you, you trade thirty-two basis points off that triple-A rating, and so, your yield, for, for example, of two thousand twenty-five was a three point one percent, and all the way down, you see, you kind of get a sense of that. On the long end, um, the triple-A is a three seventy-seven, you add sixty basis points to it, and so, the rate that you went out with was a four point three seven percent. Okay, let's go over to page six. We looked at other issues, uh, in, very similar issues in December, and really, one in November and one this past week. In every instance, the spreads were on top of, uh, your, your spread was on top of their issue, or better, or better. For instance, Oxford Water Works and Sewer in Alabama, uh, you beat them, your spread in two thousand thirty was forty-four, theirs was forty-eight, okay? The spread in two thousand thirty-six, there was sixty-six, you were fifty-three. So you beat a comparable issue in every maturity. And also with Gunnersville, Alabama, and also with Greenbrier, Arkansas Water and Sewerage. Uh, the one that was right on, you were right on top of, is, I'm not pronouncing this properly, Ogosa Area Water and Sanitation in Colorado, so, that one, you were right on top of it, but you beat handily all of the others. Having said that, um, this, again, the sale went extremely well, we worked very, very hard on it, the entire team worked very hard on it, your staff, and council, uh, and I really appreciate everything that, all, all the work was pitched in to, to help with this, and it went extremely well. Is, is there, Laurie, is there anything you want to say?
No, I'm, uh, word for word, sponsor, so, it's where, I'm, I just, I have a question that I want to, that's available.
What, that was very quick, I can get into whatever level of detail you wish. Any questions?
Well, let, let me bring the item to the floor. Members of council, you had, I, please, excuse me, members of council, you have a supplemental ordinance approving the financial practices of the twenty-twenty-four combined, uh, PUB bond, so. So is, is their motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made in second. Any questions by council? Go ahead, Mr. Mayor Portim, excuse me.
Uh, yes, sir. I'm not sure if you're going to answer this, or if the city administrator's going to answer it, but in your deliberation, or your presentation, I should say, you mentioned that the water project with Fayette County. So for our listening audience and our citizens, we know we get our water from Atlanta, but now, now we're introducing the potential of somebody else. So I think that, uh, this is the time to actually add that for our listening audience, especially when they go back and listen to this tape.
Thank you, council.
That's exactly right. I'll, uh, let me start, let Tony, he, he knows a lot more about it than I do. Um, you, your primary source of water is the city of Atlanta. Uh, there's been great concern for many, many years about, uh, due to the, your location of, of your running out of water. Water pressure is, is an issue, and so a secondary source of water has been sought here for a very long time. Uh, and this is a, a method to get a secondary source, which y'all are negotiating with, with Fayette County.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilman Whitmore. As you may recall, at the Spring Beach Street in spring of last year, there was a full discussion about the opportunity to work with Fayette County as an additional water source, and the consensus I received from council that time was to move forward with that process. We have since done so. There are two components, what you heard tonight, which is providing for the funding for that potential project, which is to connect to the water source in Fayette County, to supplement, not replace at this juncture, but to supplement our water source here in the city of Fairburn. Simultaneously, I have met numerous times with the county manager in Fayette County, and our staffs and our legal teams have drafted a agreement in principle on an intergovernmental agreement. Now that this piece is completed, that agreement will come forth to this body for consideration. If approved, and then subsequently approved by the Fayette County Board of Commissioners, that would be the second part of this process. We could then begin to spec out the project. Uh, we've got a conceptual plan for that now. That's how we priced this particular bond issue, uh, is based on that conceptual plan. But we have an agreement in principle. Uh, I met right before the holidays, uh, with Fayette County, and we've been able to work through an agreement that both their county manager and our staff, and both of our legal teams are comfortable with.
And, and as, as a follow-up, sir, uh, I, I think, uh, most of our citizens are familiar with the water authority that we are currently engaged in, meaning Union City, Palmetto, and ourselves. So I, I believe, I'm thinking, did I hear you say earlier, Mayor, they come in next council meeting to have a conversation with this?
That's correct. We have, uh, worked with the staff. They will be here for a work, extended work session presentation, where this body will have the opportunity to ask questions of, uh, the general director, the legal staff, all of the consultants. There's a team of them that will be here on January 27th.
So, so it's, it's mighty important that our citizens, uh, make sure that they tap in or come in for that particular meeting. Uh, I'm not sure to what depth they're going to cover, because, uh, we do know that, uh, some of us are trying to get out of this, uh, long-term agreement, and I understand they're trying to renew it, which will be going over twenty-plus years of putting over a million dollars into this. We have not seen a drop of water.
You are exactly correct, Councilman Whitmore, and that is why they will be here on the 27th, to specifically answer your and your colleagues' questions about the history since the year 2000, I believe, that they have been in existence. Uh, and so they will be here to speak. They have a presentation, uh, they recently did in the city of Palmetto. I think they were there for about two hours for that particular engagement. We will seek permission from this body to have an extended work session, because it is twenty-four years of history, and then we want to allot ample time for your questions to be answered by the staff in relative, you know, in whatever capacity that needs to happen. But we have confirmed that they will be here on the 27th for that purpose.
And, uh, finally, I would just like to, uh, thank you for finally getting them here in front of this body. Uh, I think we've been trying for over a year, and we have not been receiving any real tangible updates about what's going on with the water authority, and without citizens' investment of over a million dollars a year, uh, it's past due. Thank you.
Any other question?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Hudson.
I know we talked about this alternative water, um, source in March. I think for me, uh, there seems to have been a lot of conversation and a lot of interaction with Fayette, and none of those were reflective in the administrator's report. So we're almost coming back up to a year when we talked about this. I think to simplify, uh, and to, uh, to help inform this body so that we can appropriately inform our constituents that your report should provide updates on this important issue, uh, especially as my colleague talked about the water authority, which I'm very well up to speed with on its lack of progress. Uh, but now that we have sixteen million dollar plus resource for Fayetteville, what we don't have is the contingency plan, uh, the process, how you went about it. Those things should be a part of the administrator's report. Uh, that's really all that I have to say, and would like to know if you can get something in writing to us, so we can see the progression of the project as we move forward.
Absolutely. Uh, I will provide a written update, uh, of everything that's transpired. It has primarily been a negotiation effort during the bulk of that time, but that can be, uh, provided to you in writing. Thank you.
Any other members of council?
Nope.
Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next item.
Next item is a resolution requesting the Georgia General Assembly to adopt local legislation for the city of Fairburn to increase the hotel motel tax. It is a request for your approval for the hotel motel tax and to authorize the mayor to execute all necessary acts.
Do you want to go ahead, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as members of council may recall, uh, last year, uh, the council approved an item on December 11th, 2023, seeking legislation to increase the hotel motel tax rate in Fairburn from three percent to eight percent. That process requires state legislative approval. When it got to the legislature, there was an administrative issue with the language of the public ad, and it did not make crossover day. So this is an issuance of the same resolution, uh, for the current year. Uh, the state delegation is prepared to take it back to the legislature for this current session, but the resolution has to be dated in the year of that session. So this is essentially the same thing we did previously with council approval to move forward on this item.
Members of council, you have a four-year resolution requesting the Georgia Assembly to adopt legislation for the City of Fairburn increase motel tax. Is their motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Hudson made one and second, excuse me, made the motion in second by Ms. Davis. Any questions by council?
Just comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, again, uh, uh, Mr. Phillips, uh, I know this is something that I know I spoke on years ago after sitting at the, one of our conventions in Savannah. Uh, and, and again, when we go to Savannah, well, when I go to Savannah, I take advantage of the classes, things that I can learn, things that I can bring back to the city that I think that we can implement, and, um, this is one, uh, of great importance for our city, uh, because that additional five percent can be used partly with rec and partly with our, um, annual budget.
Right.
Am I correct?
Sir.
And what percentage of that is for rec?
So three and a half percent shall be allocated for the purposes of promoting tourism, contrive conventions, and trade shows within the city of Fairburn. One and a half percent shall be allocated towards tourism, product development purposes, place-making initiatives, or some other details. But that three and a half percent is connected to tourism can be used for parks and recreation facilities, and in light of our recently completed Parks Master Plan, that would be another source to possibly move that plan forward.
Understood. And, and also, if I may mention, with the, um, soon-to-be soccer, um, moving to
Fayette County.
Fayette County. And they do not have enough hotel motels, even though they're building, but with the explosion of soccer coming so close to our backyard, within our corridor, it's going to be big businesses, big business for our, uh, hotel motel. So it's going to be a big plus.
You make an excellent point, Councilman Whitmore. And as you may recall, when this council approved the most recent hotel that is to be constructed on Highway 74, that was one of the points the developer brought forward, is that they're estimating a need for up to 20,000 hotel rooms over the next five to 10 years. There's only about two or 3,000 in the area, so your point is well taken, that there will likely be a huge growth in that area, and this item, if approved by council and the legislature, will position the city to reap those benefits.
And my last question, and I, I believe I know this answer, but I'm going to ask it, uh, to afford the mayor an opportunity to respond on this. Uh, I, I know that when you have something of this nature going up to, going downtown, um, Atlanta, you know, I know we have our state reps and senators that are standing on the sideline, ready to support us. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Actually, uh, you took my comments from me. I was actually going to, uh, acknowledge, uh, Derek Jackson, State Representative. Derek Jackson kind of led the charge for this last year, and, uh, he apologized. It wasn't that, that it was his fault, it's just in this case, it got caught up with due to, due to issues beyond him. But, uh, well taken, in this case, actually, uh, uh, senior state representative in this case, and as well as, uh, our new, our new state senator, I'm sure is going to be bored and glad to support this, along with, uh, Ms. Lydia Glazier, state senators, I mean, state representative. So, yeah, the point well taken, uh, is actually already on their radar.
Thank you, sir.
Thank, uh, any other members of council got to come in?
Yeah.
Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
The next item is a resolution to submit a proposed local act for the 2025 General Assembly for Public Facilities Authority.
Members of council, you may recall, when we approved the prior, previous item on December 11th, 2023, on that same date, we also approved this resolution, uh, to create a public facilities authority in the city of Fairburn. This must also be approved by the state legislature. It is for promoting the public good and general welfare for the citizens of the city and of the state. It provides financing and providing facilities, equipment, and services within the city, uh, to be able to finance those operations for a public body or any private person. This would allow a, uh, public facilities authority to, uh, participate in funding things like our, um, public safety facility, parks and rec facilities, public facilities. Again, this was approved originally on December 11th, 2023, but it needs to be approved for the current year for the legislature to consider it in the current session.
Members of council, you have a four-year resolution to submit a proposed local act, 2025 General Assembly Public Facilities Authority. Is their motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, um, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, section 23, uh, of the proposed, um, authority speaks about conveyance of the property if for any reason, um, we needed to dissolve it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on line 409, I have, uh, some concern about the, I can consider it to be not specific enough.
Okay.
Regarding, um, who should receive those properties in the event of, uh, dissolution? And I would like to ask, uh, why would we not state that it would be the city of Fairburn specifically?
Line 409, which reads, be conveyed and transfers to such one or more public bodies as the authority shall elect?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll defer. I don't know if the attorney has any legal perspective on that. I believe that can be subject to change as this goes to the legislature. This is a general resolution that would be Fairburn-specific as it moves forward. Um, so I'll, I'll defer this point. I don't know, Mr. Attorney, if you have any legal perspective on that?
I'm sorry, restate the question.
Okay, so it's regarding conveyance of any property that this, this authority may own in the event, uh, or for whatever reason, the authority needs to be dissolved. Who has ownership of any property that has been acquired through the authority? And my question is, why would we not state specifically the city of Fairburn and not leave it to, um, to be conveyed and transferred to, uh, one or more public bodies as the authority shall elect?
Yeah, I don't think that there's any problem with us making that adjustment.
Okay.
I'll look at the appropriate statutes to be certain.
Yes, I, I would request that. Specificity is very, very important, um, because, um, any one of us could not be here. Um, history, memories fade, so we need to codify, um, that and be specific. So that's my major comment. Uh, and then the other question I have is the use of the word, uh, usufruct, if I'm con, uh, pronouncing that correctly? I want to get clarity on what that means. Uh, it first appears on line 121 in section four, uh, we go under powers of the authority.
Hello, this is Serena Noel. I apologize, I'm attending the meeting virtually.
Thank you. Hello, Serena.
That's actually for those, that's the, that's part of our assistant, I mean, excuse me, attorney team, so just be aware who she's speaking, actually. Part of the city attorneys.
Deputy city attorney.
Actually, deputy city attorney. Go ahead.
Thank you, Serena.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So a usufruct is a form of land ownership, um, and if you have long-term leases, it's important to have language in those long-term leases that state that that lease does not create a usufruct, because a usufruct is equivalent to fee simple ownership versus a lease, which is just the right to use land for a certain period of time. So it's a technical real estate term, um, that is used with respect to certain long-term leases.
Okay, so you're saying, um, the term to lease agreement versus fee simple, a payment for a lease versus a fee simple payment? Is that what you're describing it?
That's correct. Correct. So a fee simple, if it were a fee simple payment, that would convert the transaction to an ownership transaction.
I see.
And, um, oftentimes, authorities will do very long-term leases, and in the normal course of things, those long-term leases would be considered equivalent to transfer of ownership.
Okay.
So we include language in those long-term leases to state that, um, that transaction does not create a usufruct.
All right. Thank, thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Any other, any other questions? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
The next item is a resolution to add membership into the Gemmer Fund for First Responders PTSD Program, and it is a request for Mayor and Council approval of a resolution to add membership in the Georgia Interlock Risk Management Agency Fund for First Responders.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. The city is pleased to offer our first responders and our volunteer first responders a supplemental benefit, which is underwritten by MetLife. Um, the benefit is in accordance with the Ashley Wilson Act, also known as House Bill 451, and it was effective January 1st, 2025. Under House Bill 451, the Georgia General Assembly found that our first responders are often exposed to traumatic events that could happen in the line of duty and place them at risk of developing post-traumatic stress disorder, which, if untreated, could result in their inability to continue to perform in their role. The great thing about this The great thing about this benefit is that it allows our first responders to be able to file a claim confidentially quickly, and they have easy access to the benefit. To that end, we are requesting our mayor and council to approve the resolution of adding membership into GMA Fund for the First Responder Post Traumatic Stress Disorder Program, again, which is underwritten by MetLife.
Members of council, you have before you a resolution to add a membership into the GMA Fund for the First Responders PTSD Program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is that second by Mr. Smallwood. Any questions or comments by council?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Hudson.
This benefit, can you, what is the cost associated with it?
The cost associated with this benefit is an annual, it's an annual fee. We will be invoiced twice a month. Based on the current census that we have, the budgetary impact is a little over $13,000. However, the city already currently funds the employer-paid benefit currently in our budget. This is not a benefit that is of any cost to our employees or our volunteer responders.
And it's no cost to the city?
The cost to the city is the $13,912, which is billed, which is invoiced to us annually. So we'll get the first one. That will be due at the end of January, and then the second half will be due in July. And we are currently funded for this because it's an employer-paid benefit.
So it's in our budget already?
I believe so.
Okay.
Any other questions, members of council? Mr. Whitmore, looking at you there.
I was just looking at the city administrator because it seems like the HR director wasn't sure if it was in the budget or not.
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmore, it is in the budget. Thank you.
Any other question?
Comment, just a comment.
Go ahead, yes, ma'am.
I think it's a great idea. We need to do it.
I do want to just reiterate that this is not something that the city just decided to do. This was state mandated by the state of Georgia. When this first came out in July of last year, we did immediately go out and work with our brokers to go and see if we could go off a bid to see either our current supplemental benefit providers that would take on this benefit or other benefit providers. It wasn't until about October and November of last year that the state came back and said MetLife was going to be mandated, and they would be the entity that would underwrite this program.
Follow up?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a comment. I'm a mental health professional, so I'm very familiar with this. I just want to make sure that when we talk about finance and funding, that we have the appropriate budget in place and approved by council to move forward. Now, I don't remember this being presented in terms of the budget number or amount in our budget discussions. So I would like to see if you can point it out in that presentation. I'll go look for it myself where that is. Or is it in one, like, amount that was budgeted overall? Should I be looking at that amount? Like?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would, just real quick, I would say there would be, there would not have been any way for us to know the exact dollar amount that this would have cost for us because there wasn't a census that was going to be provided at that time. And at that time, the state of Georgia had not came back to say what the cost would be. However, when we do do our budget per year, we budget for every employee over 30%. And so I'm not the finance director. I'll defer to Mr. Phillips as it relates to additional budget.
Understanding that there are variable costs in the city provided benefits, we build in those escalators into that budget that is approved by council, understanding that things like state mandates may come down that require us to have some funding available to fund this $13,000 cost. And so it was not specifically line itemed, as you referenced, Councilwoman Hudson, because at that time, we didn't have the full state mandate or the cost. But we include that estimate in our defined benefits that we offer to city employees, understanding that some of those costs are variable. So that's why that funding is always allocated to allow us to address those costs that we may not be able to anticipate in advance.
Okay. I'm very visual. So if you could provide some information to me in writing, that's fine. I do support this. As a mental health professional, working with also public service members in various communities, that this research empirical data shows that this is a program that definitely needs to be funded. On the side of caution and being fiduciary responsible, the statements tonight let me know that we do need to see something that's not a budget line, and there's not a budget line item in place. But we do need to have some memorandum of understanding about the cost now that we know we don't need an amendment to the budget, right, Mr. Phillips?
We do not.
Okay. So just put that in writing, because as you did state, this was impossible for us to know this. So putting things in perspective, that there's no question that we have it visual. So I'll say it again. I'm a visual person. If you put it to me in writing, I can connect the dots. Thank you.
Any other members of council? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
The next item is ordinance to amend city's defined benefit retirement plan. This is a request for mayor and council to approve the ordinance, increase the defined benefit retirement plan to increase the monthly normal retirement benefit for elected or appointed members of the governing authority to such positions, we're going to honor after January the 13th.
Good evening again, mayor and council. This item is back before you. As you recall, this was an item that was placed on the December 9 agenda. It was presented as it relates to the city's commitment to improving our compensation strategy. We were requested back at the mayor and council's retreat on last year to take a look at your monthly defined benefit. Currently, the monthly amount is $48 per month. We went back to GMA to request a evaluation study to increase that monthly benefit per year, per year service from $48 to $100 per month. We knew at that time that there were some localities that were either similar in size, that had a similar monthly benefit. But at this time, I wanted to allow Mr. Josh Coley to come back and just be able to address some of the questions that were raised in regards, and highlight some of those cities that are similar in size and have a similar benefit.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Coley. I'm one of the field service representatives for the Georgia Municipal Association Retirement Department. So I just wanted to follow up. I was here in December, and there was a few questions about increasing this benefit. So what I have provided to you guys, and I apologize for not having enough copies for everyone. I was working from home, not in the office, and I didn't know if my home printer could do that many pages. But so the first page in there is going to be the cost study and the results of the cost study. So kind of on the top, it's where you're currently at, your current contributions, your current payroll, and then the current percentage of payroll. And then on the right-hand side is going to be, kind of in that middle section, is going to be the cost of this benefit improvement. So you can kind of look at it two, two ways, the dollar amount or the percentage of payroll. So it would increase the percentage of payroll by .66. Below that are just a few fun, funding elements about the change, talking about the increase in liability, funding ratio, that this change would have an impact on. Behind that is going to be a list of all the cities that we cover under Georgia Municipal Association, the retirement department. It is about two years old, so some of that data, 90% of it is unchanged. Some of that data might have changed a little bit. We're working on getting a new one created. But if you look at the line that says EO on it, that is all the cities that provide benefits for elected officials, and they are flat dollar amounts. So I've gone ahead, I've highlighted a few. Really, I didn't put too much thought into it, mostly cities that I assume were around the same size and kind of the, the south metro, southwest, west metro area. Included that was College Park, Carrollton, Noonan, Union City, which I believe most of the, most of those cities are kind of around in the area that we're going to go up to, or potentially go up to. I know Union City was at $100. Noonan was at 95. College Park's at 95. We've recently, within the last couple of years, added plans for Riverdale and Forest Park. Both of those cities are at $100 elected official benefits. Some of the cities that I also highlighted have a little bit lower benefits, kind of around like where you're, you're at now. But those are some of the cities with smaller populations, such as, I think Jonesboro was in there, Palmetto was in there. They're at lower benefits, but they're also smaller cities. So the smaller the, the city, the more of an impact it has for, for the change in elected official benefit. But I kind of just wanted to have this in front of you guys so that you could see kind of where you stand with other cities, because I know you guys have your own retirement plan, and it's hard to think outside of, of the, the plan for the city. So if you have any questions about that, feel free to let me know.
Let me bring the item to the floor, and then any members of council. Members of council, you have before you the item ordinance to amend the city defined benefit retirement plan, monthly benefit for elected officials. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is that good? Motion is made in second. Questions by, comments by council?
Um.
Go ahead, Mr. Hudson, go ahead.
Well, actually, I just reviewed some of the information that you gave me. So I understand that we, as a council, want to benefit, well, everybody want, of receiving an increase of $100 versus $48 into the retirement contribution. So this is my concern. Over the last three years, the citizens have paid dearly in a lot of increases in trash, water, utilities. We have increased in salaries. We're very top-heavy. And it's important to understand that the citizens will pay this. In an election year, which this is an election year, to me, the service needs to be to the citizen. This is self-serving us. $48 is not out of line. I looked at Fayetteville. I looked at cities, Union City, its population is larger than us at 26,000. We had a mere 16,000. And so I would caution increasing this to $100. That's $52 from 48 to $52. I think we need to be mindful that our taxpayers are going to fund this. I understand that it used to be $13, and we made progress to $48. But with all the taxed or the increases that our community has received, I think as elected officials, this is a bailout gracefully, not to self-serve ourself, at sometime down the line, maybe. But I don't see this as something that I can support today. I can't.
Yes, ma'am. Any other members of council? Seeing none? I'm sorry, go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Well, just, just to add to that, mayor, and to my colleagues, we started the budget process back in August.
Yeah.
There were a lot of questions that was asked in reference to the budget about employee salaries being top-heavy. And those questions were never addressed for approving the budget. And then immediately after the budget, you have individuals that got increases, 5.3%, and I believe 5.13%, all right? That did not come before this board, but it was administered through the city administrator. On top of that, we, there was an attempt to increase the mill rate, 1.5% to increase our budget by $2 million. Thankfully, that was defeated. So now, this body, we shouldn't be so quick to raise rates for ourselves when we already know that, again, my colleague already stated it, last year, we went up in what? Utilities? We went up in trash, okay? There's supposed to have been another increase this past December. But I think better heads prevailed and did not bring that forth. But we know it's coming again. So I think that we should really look at what we're doing. And as an elected official, if I was going to retire, yeah, that would be nice. I would like to have that as well. But I don't think that it's in good taste for us to even consider doing anything like this at this time.
Any other, any other members of council? Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Um, yes. I understand what my colleagues are saying in reference to that. And there are times when being elected official, sometimes you go out of your pocket to do different things, mileage, the meetings you have to go to and all of this, for fear that it's going to seem like you want more in your pocket, when a lot of times, you're putting out a lot of your own money to do the things that you have to do and to represent the city when we need to represent the city. So in reference to going back to even the salaries, we didn't have an increase in salary for, I think, nine years, eight years, nine years. It was $9,500 a year. And a year or a year ago, a year and a half ago, we increased it to a big 13,500 a year, which I really feel that that is not comparable to some of the other council members. We don't have staff. We don't have, I mean, sometimes we make copies. So in reference to that, and I am one who would go beyond the call of duty and not ask for anything. But at the same time, the city of Fairburn, we have grown a lot. We have done a lot. There are a lot of hours that I put in to prepare myself for council meetings, a lot of reading, a lot of documentation, because I care about the city. I care about my decisions, and I work hard to sit here and represent our citizens. So I feel that we should at least be somewhat adequately compensated.
Follow up?
So I am in favor of this as it relates to our retirement. Thank you.
All right. Members of council, okay, I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead. So you go ahead.
I would just like to say that I've been on the council now 15 years, and this is my 16th year. When I started, the pay at that time was $3,000 a year. And of course, you, $3,000 a year, even back at that time, was, was great. But the thing of it was is that I, I, like the other people on this council, set a focus on the city of Fairburn. Now, when we first got in here 15 years ago, we were showing like $2 million surplus. But when we actually had an audit done, it came back, we were $383,000 in red. In other words...
That noise? Packing noise?
She's typing. But it's like...
You have the microphone. Go ahead.
Situation is, do what now?
Go ahead, sir. Keep going. Go ahead, sir. Keep going.
Okay. Please don't interrupt me. So the situation is, is that in all these 15 years, we've got employees that are making $100,000 now or more. Police officers, when I, when I policed here in 1971, I got $500 a month to be a law enforcement officer. Now, law enforcement wages are way up in the 60s and 70s. So like I say, it's just that we have done things that have been sacrifices a lot of times just to promote this city and to make this city what it is today. Mr. City Manager, how much surplus do we have currently? Do you have any idea?
I don't have that number in front of me. I don't know if Ms. Billingsley is... See if she can pull that number up. We have a fund balance in our reserve fund.
Your reserves is what I'm asking about. Your reserves is what I'm asking about.
Do you have a rough estimate of what it is?
Just a rough estimate.
Just a rough estimate?
Yes, ma'am.
We're not quite done with the current fiscal year, but we are... Okay. At the twen, at the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, we had twenty-one million. That's just the general fund.
Twenty-one million in reserves.
That's just the general fund.
Great, great.
So for this fiscal year, didn't have that much of a, for twenty-twenty-four, it was not that much of a difference, if I recall, but it may have been right around twenty million dollars. Now, for twenty-twenty-five, you all decide to dip into that by seven million dollars to fund some capital projects. So at the end of twenty-twenty-five, with anticipation, if those projects will all take place, then you'll be down another seven million dollars. So it could run anywhere from thirteen, fourteen million dollars.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So you can see just by finding out what the reserves are at this time, that there is a lot of stuff that, that we have done that's been a positive for the city of Fairburn and for the residents of Fairburn. As a matter of fact, there's been reconditioning, basically, of our Duncan Park. Those things cost millions of dollars to do, but they all worked together to give the people of Fairburn a place to go and enjoy their time here. We redid the swimming pool. Swimming pool had been shut down for many years, and then there was a black mold that was in the structure that was over the pool, and so that was one of the reasons that we couldn't do anything with it. And of course, we did, I believe in fifteen years, we did purchase Duncan Park from Fulton County, because it was Fulton County's Duncan Park at that time. So I'm just saying that to, to make us, I guess, make more sense, is is that we have sacrificed for a long time, and a hundred dollars, I'm sure many of you have retired from other jobs that have, pay you a lot more than the hundred dollars a month. But the thing of it is, is that I would appreciate it, and I'm assured everyone else here that has given their time and their brain ability to calculate and to go from the three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in the red to the current twenty, twenty-seven million that she was just talking about. So I'm in favor of the hundred dollars. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Clarification. This is, we accrue currently forty-eight dollars for one year.
Per month?
Per month, per year of service.
Per month, per year. All right.
Okay.
The easy way to do it is just take your years of service, multiply it by currently forty-eight, and then it would move up to a hundred.
Right.
Yeah. Exactly. It's not a hundred dollars a month.
Correct.
I just want, I want clarity.
Correct.
From the forty-eight to the hundred.
Yeah.
Years of service times.
It's just your years of service.
Yes, and to clarify, this would only be for elected officials going, that are actively employed and going forward. Elected officials that are terminated vested, so they're not, they're not collecting their benefit yet, this would not apply to them. It's only elected officials going forward.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Whitmore.
Well, thank you for that clarification. That's one of the questions that I had, but I'm gonna say this, we are public servants. And my colleague mentioned that for our citizens, we did a lot of things at Duncan Park. That's what we're supposed to do. That's what we're supposed to do. All right? And when you, when you look at it, and my colleague mentioned the reserves, and let me remind you, we had our reserves set at thirty-five percent of all the taxes that come in per year. And then, there was a, there was some thought of reducing it. We finally agreed to twenty-eight percent, so we still got that two million dollars to go in the general fund. And now, what's gonna be before this board, before the end of this year, whether we're gonna keep it at twenty-eight percent or take it back up to thirty-five percent? If some pundits want to take it back up to thirty-five percent, so we'll lose that two million dollars. So then where are we gonna go? Maybe increase the mill rate again, or attempt to, which is gonna also be on our citizens. So what I remember you saying last time you were here, sir, there was a question that was asked, and you said, "Well, staff asked me to come and talk about it just as is," basically. Am I correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct. This whole process started with the city administration bringing it in.
You answered my question. Thank you. So on top of that, then, you know, we're talking about those of us that's gonna be retiring in the near future. All right? However, we have just went through an ordeal last week where we had some issues with the weather, and we shut off people's electricity. Since then, we had to change our heart, and we're using the method or the understanding that we need to look out for our people first. All right? Yet and still, we gonna tax our people more to take us up right now? We have bigger and better things that we should be considering right now, instead of patting ourselves on the back and giving ourselves an increase. This is an election year. It's gonna be interesting to see how all my colleagues vote on this. This is an election year, and this is gonna be something that's gonna come out during this election year. We cannot look at increasing benefits for us without taking care of our citizens, because we are public servants.
All right, thank you. I'll make my comment is, I'm gonna, if it comes to a tie, I'm actually gonna support, I'm sort of supportive of it regardless, but in this case, ladies and gentlemen, as a person that spends, as Ms. Davis mentioned, I'm another person, spends a lot of their personal money to act between helping residents that need situations, and everybody in their mother doesn't want their business in the street, be in terms of asking for assistance through the city, but they will let me know as the mayor, and I'm sure they let, as other council, I'm not the only person they call, but what periodically, on a regular basis, I'll end up giving a lot of my personal money, because that's just what I do. So again, with that being said, I'm gonna support the increase. Oh, there's a vote on the floor in second.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mayor, I still have time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Public service work is about supporting communities, communities, serving others and protecting the public rights and interests, not the interest of our own. We knew what the obligations was when we signed up for this role. Public service does not always provide monetary benefits, yet should never be put with the duty to produce, without the duty to produce for our citizens. The taxpayers have afforded us a budget to finance the work that we do. So I'm concerned when I hear I'm using my own money, when in fact, it sounds like that will be a commingling issue, because when Ms. Hudson brought to this council, well, brought to the administration, the mayor brought it to council, a simple flyer that I wanted to put on the website to promote a back-to-school event, an entire policy was created to stop that, and members, my colleagues, voted on that. And so in this election year, and with the three years of increases, the numbers are out there. The surplus that we have does not mean meeting the monetary desires of elected officials. However, how can we prioritize the needs of this city, the infrastructure, and make the best impact in our citizenry that the quality of life is improved? And so you can support it all you want, anyone can support it, but the voters will see this. The citizens have not benefited in terms of the financial decisions that we've made that cause increases in their trash, utilities, water rates, decreases in the ARPA funding to support the residents in this increase. Citizens was not even prepared for the increase, and now, because there's a possible lingering of members may retire with the service, the service hours or years there, some members will receive a whopping sixteen hundred dollars a month off the back of the taxpayers. So I want this community to match the level of service with this council's acts to serve themselves. And if they don't equate, then we have to be cautious how we tax our citizens. Anything that we did in this community, the taxpayers paid for it. You did not do them a favor. Using your money, that's your business, but the city of Fairburn provides us with a budget. If there was a need to increase that, we as council had that opportunity during our budget discussions to talk about that. In fact, I raised concerns about putting money for community engagement that's directly accessible to this council to at least adhere to the request and the cries of our community to engage them. That has not happened. I'm here to serve, and it is a selfless serve. Raising the contribution benefits the elected official who took an oath to serve and understood the monetary allotment for that role. So no one can just basically say, "I deserve, I deserve, I deserve." No one, I don't diminish the work that anyone is doing on this diocese, 'cause I know I put on for my city. But at the end of the day, this is not a smart move. I'm gonna stand on the side with the residents, and I'm letting the residents to hear me clearly. I am not going to support this measure, and I will advocate against it even if it passes. I reclaim my time at thirty-eight seconds.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Davis.
I just wanna make something very clear. I think the problem with our political process today is that we make decisions when there is an election. Doesn't matter to me, when I make decisions, I make decisions that's good for the city, and when we are adequately compensated for our time, well, let me say for my time, I can only speak for Linda J. Davis. It doesn't matter if it's an election or not, because I can, if anyone, any citizen comes up to me and asks me about my decision, I can document it and share with them, because I'm a straight shooter. I don't wait till election or not-election, scared of this or scared of that. If I'm gonna make a decision, I will back it up, and I will back it up to the citizens.
Whitmore, then, Will.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I would just like to say for the record, until this body addresses the elephant in the room, talking about salaries, all the people that came in under this administration with all these excessive salaries...
Hold on a second, Councilman Whitmore, please. You have the time, because some of you have already spoken twice.
I still had time left, if I could call.
The first one, yeah, left. The first one is five minutes. Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
As I was saying, until this dice recognizes and address the elephant in the room, we had a budget process with a lot of questions asked, we had no answers coming from administration, we have excessive salaries for all these new people that are in high positions, you have assistance to assistance to assistance, and they're getting paid a lot of money for a city the size of ours, that eighteen thousand citizens. That is not the market rate of what these positions deserve and should have. That's the elephant in the room, that's the conversation that we should be having, but no one wants to have it. It's important for us to address those things, and when you talk about election year and a non-election year, it doesn't matter to me either. I didn't even care during my election year if you were still gonna talk about raising it, but the decision was made not to do it until after the election. So come on. Apples is apples, and oranges is oranges. Let's do this thing right. Consider it. Citizens, pay attention, it's your tax dollars.
All in, all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor. I have a... Is Serena on the line?
Yes.
She had sent a motion that needed to be made for this one.
Okay.
So I need to know if you want this motion, this to actually be the motion?
Yes, go ahead. If she sent it to me, she's listening.
Hold on one second.
I have a question. Why didn't we receive this information with our packet? The motion. That's what this item.
This was given to me tonight.
Not you, clerk.
Okay.
Listen, we have to do things right in decency and order. I really don't feel comfortable now, because all of a sudden now, we have a motion that should be coming to us that we haven't even read before.
Let me...
Can we yield, can we yield to Ms.?
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Today, in speaking with the HR Director with GMA, because this was brought before you in December, the original agreement was dated for December ninth, twenty-twenty-four, at the time when it initially came before you. Because it's on the agenda tonight, GMA's legal has to change that language, and so it's the exact same ordinance, the only thing changing is the actual date in which the agreement will take effect, which would be January thirteenth, if it's approved. And so what the city attorney did was changed the language to allow you all, if it's the will of council, to approve this item and allow our city attorney alone with GMA's attorney to make that small change, but substantially, the agreement stays the same.
What is that effective date? For if it were to be approved?
The effective date would be today.
Okay. What's the, the, the budget? It's effective for budget fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six?
By twenty-six. Yes.
Is it twenty-five or twenty-six?
F-five-twenty-six.
Okay.
Say that again, louder.
Starts next year.
Yes.
It starts next year.
F-five-twenty-six.
Okay. And so, Ms. James, can I get the motion? She still needs to...
Motion was to authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city the adoption agreement and the addendum to the adoption agreement.
Okay.
With the form attached to the ordinance.
That's, okay, that's the item that's on the floor. So is there a motion?
You had a motion to approve it. Only thing I wanted to do is put this in here, because the date is December the ninth, that what you're doing is you're authorizing to execute this agreement, the date will change. What you have here is December the ninth, the date will change to January thirteenth. So you're authorizing the mayor to sign the correct agreement.
Thank you, clerk.
Okay, is there?
I understood that, but we still don't get a pass on not getting this information before a meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Hold on one second, ma'am, 'cause that item is, in this case, the motion's been made, in this case, I'm asking for the amendment, accepted or amended.
Removed.
Okay. The second?
Second.
Motion's been made and probably second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
That motion cares. Next item.
Next item is Evergreen Final Platte. It's a request, mayor and council approval of the final platte for the Evergreen development.
Hello again.
Hi.
Hello. The item before you is the Evergreen Final Platte. This item was approved in two thousand and twenty-two. The applicant submitted the final platte and the ASBIL. The ASBIL was reviewed by our Public Works Community Development Department, our Utility Department, and it has to date met all of the conditions required by the city ordinance that they can implement at this point. They still have to install a gazebo and some of the amenity items, but they have provided the plans for those. The applicant is also working with community members to stress some ideas or some concerns. Those concerns are not in the ordinance. Those concerns are not in the ordinance. Um, so staff can only recommend approval because at this point, the final platte is meeting all the conditions of the ordinance that's associated with the development.
Members of council, you have before you a recommendation for mayor and council to approve the final platte for Evergreen Development. Is there a motion?
移到
Second.
Motion's made and probably second. Any questions or comments by council? Mr. Whitmore, go ahead, sir.
Ma'am, just looking through the material, and thank you for, thank you for this. It helps when it's blown up and you can actually read it versus a piece of paper. My question to you, I didn't see it and maybe I missed it or overlooked it. This is going to be for seven, seventy-three single-family homes.
That's correct, yes.
P O A H O A?
Um, I, they have to adopt a homeowners association because of the architectural design standards that are associated with it. And also there's a five percent rental cap that would be enforced.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to make sure, because maybe I missed it. I wanted to make sure that five percent was there to be consistent with what this body has been doing over the past few years.
It's required in the ordinance that was approved with the development.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other members of council got a question? And, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
The next item is John Rivers Road Public Roadway Lighting. It's a request for mayor and council approval to execute an agreement with Greystone Power for an additional nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy-two thousand seventy-four cents to expedite completion of the public roadway lighting project on Jones, John, John Rivers Road for total project cost not to exceed a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Good evening, uh, Steve Mayor and Council.
Yes, sir.
Staff are recommending adding an additional nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-four cents to the public street lighting project on John Rivers Road. This request is being presented to expedite the installation of the street lighting on the poles in the Greystone Power section of that corridor. The project has included sections of road in the Georgia Power corridor that have had the lights completed for the roadway at this time on the Highway twenty-nine approach side. The issue that we have identified is for the project to be completed expeditiously in the Greystone area. The attached utilities must, if you could look at the picture, the lower, lowest lines are what we're talking about. I use this out of our city for an example. Issue that we've identified is for the project to be completed, um, oh, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Um, they need to be moved down on the poles for the lights to be safely installed on the remaining poles. We've had the project active since June of twenty twenty-four. The National Joint Utility Notification System has notified the attached utilities such as AT&amp;T, Comcast, and various other high-speed fiber companies that they need to transfer the lines lower since that June date in twenty twenty-four with no progress. The additional funds would be used to abandon the poles in question, install new poles at the locations needed, thereby allowing for the project to be completed in sixty days without further delays by the other communications utilities painfully slow progress.
That's it. Members of council, you have it for you. The item read, um, about the city clerk for the Johns Rivers Road Public Roadway Lighting. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mo, motions made by Mayor Murper, second by Mr. Heath. Any questions or comments by council?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson, then Mr. Whitmore.
Since it's, uh, Greystone's territory, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, will they reimburse us for those expenditures?
No, ma'am. We would be paying them such as a subcontractor to do the installations in their area.
Okay, we're paying them as a subcontractor to do this work on our behalf?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because we're in our city.
And I'd also like to add, uh, that there has never been lighting on John Rivers Road.
Oh, I agree, I agree. It's sorely needed, sorely needed, yes. Uh, as other areas of the city as well. So I really appreciate, uh, actually that we're moving that progress and, uh, toward that, uh, progress. Let me ask, uh, why? How is it that this particular road got priority versus another road? Because there are several areas of the city that need lighting as well. Do we have a, a plan or a schedule for lighting in other parts of the city?
Uh, yes, we do. Right now, we have also installed lighting in the Colita Fayette system on Mylum Road, along the Mylum Road area and across Highway, uh, twenty-nine going the opposite direction. There's lighting there now. Uh, also, after this is completed, I've, uh, spoken with the Director of Utilities, and we're going to try to get lighting installed. And this is also in the Greystone Territory area from the Lake Jonathan area all the way to Highway seventy-four, Berlin B. And that empty area, because there's not adequate lighting there also.
Right. Um, well, you know, I mean, we, historically, we are, uh, have been a rural area. And, uh, so lighting has been, it's very sparse in the entire city. But as we are growing and, um, building more subdivisions, we are in need, uh, of more lighting. So, um, I applaud this. One last question. We do receive franchise fees from Greystone, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So that helps to offset the cost, um, of this project or any project in any of the utilities jurisdiction. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You know, I'm sorry, Mr. Whitmore, go ahead, sir.
Uh, yes, sir. Just, uh, can you tell me approximately how many miles we're talking about down John Rivers that Greystone has?
I, I couldn't give you, uh, an honest answer on that, but I could get that information for you.
And, and that roadway is shared with both Greystone and?
Georgia Power.
Georgia Power. So Georgia Power picks up when you turn it off for twenty-nine, correct?
That is correct.
Going down, and I'm not sure how far down, but, and then we pick up with, with Greystone. So I'm going to share this with, uh, my colleagues and our citizens. Uh, there's a lot of people that walk down John Rivers Road, and there's no lighting whatsoever there, going to factories, going to power metal to work, and so on and so forth. And, uh, I, for one, lived down there. I didn't ask for this project, so let me go on the record for stating that. I didn't ask for it, but I almost hit someone that was walking down that road with dark clothing on. So my additional comment to staff is that roadway has no sidewalks either. Now, and I know we just spent, uh, we just had a nice beautification on Verrill and B Smith. We installed sidewalks and lights. So my hope is that this is going to be the same type of project as we continue to beautify our city by adding those safety measures, both with lights and with sidewalks.
Your point is well taken, Councilman Whitmore. That is a first step in our continued efforts to improve pedestrian sidewalks and lighting. There was an opportunity to at least get the lighting installed. It is not our intent that everything halts with only the lighting. Uh, as funding is available, as approved by this body to take on additional streetscape projects, that is the goal, is to continue to move forward on those types of projects. Due to the safety concerns that we've heard from citizens that live off of John's River, highlighted by your comments just now, Councilman Whitmore, we wanted to seize this opportunity to at least provide lighting as a safety step, but it's not the final step.
Thank you for that. And one other question, sir. Um, I know when we're building our new communities, HOA communities, we're going underground. So is there any reason why we're not going underground with the lighting? Well, because you need the poles and the wires on. Okay, I just answered my question, never mind.
Yes, sir.
Any, no other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is approval of award RFP twenty-four dash nine-nine-nine, City of Fairburn Destination Restaurant Train Depot. It's a request for mayor and council approval to award RFP Train Depot to Buttermilk Biscuit Restaurant.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This evening, we seek approval, uh, to award RFP twenty-four nine-nine-nine, our new, our newest destination, uh, location within the, uh, city's downtown historic commercial district. Uh, this approval will help to facilitate a legal or a lease agreement uh, between Buttermilk Biscuit Restaurant, uh, the selected bidder, and the City of Fairburn. Uh, the agreement will permit the restaurant to operate from the historic Train Depot situated at seven Northwest Broad Street in downtown Fairburn, thereby contributing to the revitalization of the area and enhancing the dining options available to residents and visitors. Uh, the RFP, just to provide some, uh, brief history, the RFP was published in Sept, on September ninth, twenty twenty-four, and extended to December second, twenty twenty-four. The solic, uh, solicitation process for potential tenants incorporated a comprehensive approach, which included collaboration with a retail strategist to analyze market conditions and formulate a strategic plan for catalytic redevelopment of the Train Depot site. Additionally, the process featured cold calling. Um, good old fashioned, uh, reaching out to, uh, potential restaurants, um, targeted marketing efforts and engagement with procurement to solicit bids through the BidNet system. The targeted outreach aimed at prospective tenants at both the local and national levels with the particular focus on restaurant contractors and operators. During the bidding, bidding process, we engage, uh, approximately two hundred and twenty-three potential candidates. Um, of these thirty candidates expressed an interest by logging onto BidNet. We were, we identified that through the audit process. Furthermore, all parties expressing interest were encouraged to submit their proposals. All parties expressing interest are those people who contacted the city through various means, calls, uh, through the contact system online or drive-bys. The Buttermilk Biscuit Restaurant emerged as the successful applicant based on final submission of all required documents. That included their proposed investment, their marketability, vi, and also viability of their concept. Buttermilk Biscuit, just a little bit about the restaurant, is a Southern-inspired breakfast, brunch, and lunch restaurant. The good news is they are also tailoring their budget. You'll hear a little bit about that tonight. They're tailoring their schedule for Fairburn to include dinner. You'll hear more about that from the owner-operator. Uh, the offerings elevated casual dining experience known for its quality and welcoming atmosphere. It is a community-driven destination where guests can feel a nostalgic sense of home. With excellent food, top-tier service, and community-centric ethos, Buttermilk Biscuit attracts a wide range of diners, including families, professionals, tourists, and those seeking a comfortable local dining experience. Buttermilk Biscuit Expansion, uh, seeks an expansion into Fairburn, a growing community-focused area where there is ample opportunity for growth and engagement. Just a few accolades, um, they were recently voted, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, one of the best restaurants for breakfast and brunch. Um, also, they were received, um, recognition in the National Black Business Month proclamation from the City of College Park. Um, Ms. Leanna Lynn, who is the owner proprietor, also gives back to the community, every community she impacts. So she, this is a donation, a participation in fundraising with Tri-City Schools High School Band in East Point. Um, she's also given to the police department there, uh, their Main Street Association, and Charles Drew High School Basketball, Baseball Team, excuse me. Um, she dedicates time, this is a picture with some local students at Woodward Academy. Um, and she is also one of the featured SBA, the Small Business Association success stories. She was voted, so we have to make sure the food is good. So she was voted twenty twenty-four Best Shrimp and Grits in College Park. Um, this is a feature in Atlanta Best, uh, New Restaurants. Then finally, we want to make sure that she meets health standards. So she won the bachelor, uh, one hundred percent in terms of, uh, health, uh, fair, uh, health checkup, excuse me. So I'm going to invite Ms. Leanna Lynn and her team to come up briefly to give a statement and to answer any additional questions you may have about her restaurant.
Thank you, Sylvia. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Leanna Lynn. I'm the proud founder and owner of Buttermilk Biscuit, a Southern-inspired breakfast, brunch, and lunch restaurant. Our mission is to provide an elevated casual dining experience. With excellent food, exceptional service, and a commitment to community values, Buttermilk Biscuit has become a destination for families, business professionals, tourists, and locals searching for a warm, comforting place to enjoy a delicious meal. Our flagship location thrives in the downtown corridor of College Park, an area known for its exceptional brunch restaurants. We are thrilled to bring Buttermilk Biscuit to the historic Train Depot Building in Fairburn, at the heart of Fairburn. We look forward to transforming this landmark into a community hub and enriching the rich character and appeal of downtown Fairburn. For those of you who may not know who I am, I bring a mix of entrepreneurial spirit, hospitality experience, and community engagement to the table. My career began in marketing and branding where I founded Executive Marketing Company. I also served as Social Media Manager for Operation Hope, which is a global nonprofit focused on empowering underserved communities through financial literacy education. These experiences ignited a passion to connect with the community through business. This led me to co-own and operate the successful Crew Lounge in Midtown Atlanta for two years. And it was during that time that I discovered my true calling, which is creating dining experiences with a touch of Southern hospitality. Buttermilk Biscuit is more than just a restaurant, but it's a place where community values and great food intersect. A place where families like my own can connect over a comforting meal. A place where business professionals can have a meeting, or friends can have a morning catch-up. A place where tradespeople, like the folks who build my restaurants, can come enjoy a home away from home after a long day of work. I am supported by an amazing operations team, all of which are here today, including my Chief Administrative Officer, LaNoya Hawkins, my Director of Operations, Andrew Spencer, my Kitchen Manager and Catering Coordinator, Janelle Davis, and our Lead Chef, Jerome Gatson. It is their expertise and commitment that is the engine behind our success. And we are looking forward to partnering with the City of Fairburn to make a real impact in this community. And here's how we're going to do it. Fairburn is home to hard-working individuals in industries like transportation, warehousing, and manufacturing. To meet the needs of this community, we plan to extend our hours on select weekdays and weekends, ensuring that all sixteen thousand residents, regardless of their schedule, has an opportunity to enjoy Buttermilk Biscuit. From a community perspective, we're dedicated to supporting Fairburn's vibrant community through sponsorships, donations, catering, volunteer efforts, and local partnerships. From participating in local events to contributing to revitalization efforts, we aim to be a consistent and engaged partner. Buttermilk Biscuit will also create over twenty new jobs, offering competitive wages, career growth, and incentivization programs. Our team culture values respect, integrity, and inclusivity, ensuring that every team member feels empowered to succeed. From a civic perspective, our goal is to create a unique and locable, accessible, um, destination where residents can enjoy a special dining experience without needing to travel to neighboring cities. Additionally, we aim to establish a vibrant focal point that attracts visitors to Fairburn's historic downtown corridor. My experience as a board member of Main Street College Park has really taught me the transformative power of revitalization efforts on both businesses and residents. As a mother, living just eight short minutes away from this great city, I'm deeply invested in Fairburn's future. This is a city that embraces its history while also looking toward the future, and I'm honored to be a part of that vision. I would like to extend my thanks to Mayor Mario Avery, Mayor Pro Tim Heath, and council members Davis, Hudson, Avery Smallwood, Portis Jones, and Whitmore for giving me the opportunity to present today. Together, I believe that we can create something truly special in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of council, at this time, we will bring the item to the floor so that we can officially vote on it. And, you, members of council, you have before you to award RFP twenty-four-nine-nine-nine to City of Fairburn Destination Restaurant, Restaurant at the Train Depot. Is there, uh, is there a motion?
No move.
Motion is made, properly seconded by Mr. Heath. Any questions or comments by council?
Yes.
Ms. Davis, and then Ms. Da- Ms. Jones, and, uh, Ms. Hudson.
That's simply, you have any samples?
I do not mind bringing some in to City Hall.
I'm like, I don't, I don't see anything over there.
That's it, that's all.
Little biscuit.
We do give a ten percent discount to all city workers, um, as well as veterans and, uh, students and faculty as well.
Oh.
That's great.
Is that what she had?
Uh, could you talk a little bit about your timeline?
Yes, so that's a great question. Um, so I'm told by Sylvia that, you know, we will possibly have a lease to review by the end of February. So our hope is that pending approval of the lease and negotiations, we'd be able to start construction in mid-March. We anticipate a four-month timeline, um, on construction. So we are hoping to open in mid-September.
Awesome, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hudson, and then, uh, Mr. Whitmore?
Yes, I want to welcome, welcome you to the city of Fairburn, and I thank you for, uh, researching our city. And I thank you for your passion, uh, as a single mom. I know what that is. And so I'm excited for everything that you're going to bring to the city. You just want to, I'm, I'm a non-meat eater now.
We have some vegan options.
Okay, all right.
Yay!
And so that, that works definitely for me, so congratulations. I really, really feel your passion, your energy, and your authenticity. So thank you again, uh, for choosing Fairburn.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Mr. Whitmore?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Heard your passion with your presentation. And, uh, I know that, uh, we're going to be looking forward to you opening up. I have people coming into town. I go all the way to College Park, patronize you there in College Park. It's going to be great to patronize the business here in the city of Fairburn. That means a lot. Can you shed a little light on what type of construction you're considering over there at the depot?
Yes, and so we have been working with an architect to go ahead and get some plans drawn up. Uh, we are aware that we'll have to submit those plans to the city, um, for consideration. Uh, one of our, uh, biggest goals, of course, is to maintain the historical integrity of the building. There will not be a lot of significant updates to the exterior. Um, most of the significant updates will come into the interior, and a lot of that includes, uh, destruction of some of the walls and opening the space up in there.
Okay, thank you. And, and as you probably well know, there's a historical portion downstairs in the basement.
Yes.
So, uh, yes, so congratulations and, uh, looking forward to you opening up, especially since you're not just going to do breakfast and lunch. You're looking at, um, extending hours and doing some after-hours stuff, so that's a beautiful thing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
With that being said, okay, yes, sir, go ahead.
I know you kind of spoke to the crew over there, but can you introduce the crew? Because I see they've, they've been on deck all night supporting you, uh, so who do we have over here?
Yeah, they're wired. Um, and if you guys wouldn't mind standing up as I introduce you. So I have my chief administrative officer, LaNoya Hawkins. And I also have my director of operations, Andrew Spencer. He's the one that almost jumped up in the beginning. And I have my catering coordinator and kitchen manager, Janelle Davis. And last, but certainly not least, we have our lead chef, Jerome Gatsin.
Right, all right.
Well, awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, with that being said, members of council, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you, you have any reports, Mr.?
Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Phillips, you have any reports tonight? Okay, not tonight, gotcha, okay. Members of council, I have a mayor council comments. I'll start with, uh, former Mayor Pro Tim, James Whitmore.
Uh, yes, mayor, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So again, uh, last meeting, it was asked to place an item on the agenda for process and procedures. Uh, prior to having the opportunity to address the issue, the attorney took the floor and, and spoke against such an item. There was no objection to have this discussion by council members that were present. In addition, give me a second, I had to close out some things here. In addition, this procedure has been used with another current council member to add items to the agenda without any resistance. Also, in addition, the meeting was not properly adjourned due to the mayor, due to Mayor Avery and the attorney not wanting the item to be discussed. That's concerning to me as a councilperson. My concern is how this administration has continued to block this body to perform their duties per the oath that we took. It's, um, it's me today, but with the silence of my colleagues, it could be you tomorrow. My concerns lend around the operation of the city administration office with salaries to the point of two employees receiving increases. In addition, since the beginning of the budget debate for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, questions have been asked of the administration prior to the budget approval with no follow-up with any other questions that were raised. For these reasons not identified, my request for documents prior to the budget process has been delivered untimely. However, since the mayor, city administrator, and the attorney has weaponized their efforts to keep myself and other colleagues at bay and not provided the information requested, this is illegal, and they have failed to follow Georgia law. However, a citizen can ask for the same information, documents, and receive them within the seventy-two hour period.
Thank you, sir.
Of Georgia law.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Portis Jones?
No comment, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Smallwood?
No comments.
Uh, Ms. Hudson?
Yes, Happy New Year to the citizens of Fairburn. I took an oath in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four to serve this community with integrity, accountability, and ensure transparency. In twenty-twenty-five, we enter into the year, and we still have issues and concerns around the lack of transparency. I'll go as far as to say, when I was made aware that administrators are making well over a quarter of a million dollars with two salaries, I was floored. I wanted to make sure that I compared this information to cities that are comparable to our size. And when I did, I was floored even more. There has to be a consensus, whether you agree to like a person or not. We were elected to do a job. As trustees, we have a duty to warn and a duty to do no harm. Our decisions here are complicit. Where we cannot unite in what is integral and what is right, then we have no business sitting on this diocese. I commit to a full and prosperous year of working to serve this community, seeking truth, even through litigation. There is no more asking, this is a demand, and I will receive this information on the behalf of the residents. I find it appalling that we will sit on this diocese and vote to uplift ourselves, and we have residents struggling to pay their water bills. You were elected to do a job. We were elected to do a job, and we have to have equity and fairness as a part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Uh, Mr. Heath?
Uh, no comment.
And, uh, Ms. Davis?
Uh, yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, first, we'd like to congratulate Mayor Pro Tim Alex Heath for being Mayor Pro Tim for twenty-twenty-five, and all our other reappointees, um, from the, from our agenda tonight. I also want to, uh, give a shout-out and just, uh, congratulations to a member of the General Services area, Mr. Tyler, who does a fabulous job on our right-ofways on Tennis Drive. You know, we've had some issues. Sometimes I think they forget we are in Fairburn, but Mr. Tyler, I didn't even see a leaf remaining on the right-ofway. And I, and he has the most beautiful personality. And I just want to give him a shout-out for a job well done. And he's consistent with it. And in fact, I had to stop him from doing my driveway. I'm going, no, 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 you don't do my driveway now. So, but he was just awesome, and I just want to put it in the record. Thank you, Tyler, for your great work.
Thank you. Did I get everybody, yes, okay? I just want to say, uh, my comment was, this is state policy that's currently in place in the city of Fairburn. Pursuant to state law, OCGA sixteen-dash-eleven-one-twenty-seven, carry weapons or lone guns in unauthorized locations. The city of Fairburn can legally prohibit all weapons, including concealed weapons, from entering the city facilities. This is an existing state law and is being actively enforced in all city facilities. The law, uh, applies to any person entering a city facility without exception, to include elected officials, appointed officials, city staff, or citizens. Any person with a weapon or who refuses to comply or that does not consent to assert as direct about a Fairburn police officer will be denied entry into the building and may be subject to further legal consequences. Want to also mention, ladies and gentlemen, make, make sure my time is right. Want to just make sure, and we, we're very proud of our staff right now in the city of Fairburn. Again, uh, you don't end up with a thirty-five percent, uh, reserve. If, it was this governing body that actually did in the first two years that acquired, uh, the financial savings that allowed us to have a thirty-five percent, uh, retention, in this case, savings, reserve fund. Want to mention also, ladies and gentlemen, you don't end up with twenty million dollars in reserve by accident. That's a, that's a decision in a reflection of your governing body. Your bond council just told you publicly, as we, as we was discussing the bonding, the great work and the great disposition that the city of Fairburn carries. Want to thank you because I'm aware right now that, that the new business that just got approved right now is a reflection of us being, uh, marketable to, to, to not just construction, but in this case, every industry. So with that being said, I want to just say thank the staff for a lot of, uh, our ability to maintain our financial solvency. Again, with no tax increase since twenty-sixteen, we don't have any assistance to assistance. I just want to say we're proud. Our staff is being pursued by other mayors. I know because they're telling me out of respect that they're pursuing a lot of people in our various, in almost every department. So with that being said, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.